And we would ask that the Honorable Travis Reader conduct our invocation and our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Dear heavenly Father, thank you for waking us up this morning. Thank you for sending us in the direction that you wanted us to go. Give us strength, dear heavenly Father, as we make these decisions for the county of Newberry. Bless us and continue to take us in your direction and make us do the things in your will and in your way. These blessings we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Praise allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indelible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, everyone, for being here tonight. It is exciting to have our second round of presentations on the capital sales tax proposals. And we appreciate everybody that has put so much effort into this. Item number one on our agenda is the additions, deletions, and adoption of the agenda. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Here is none, is there? A motion that we accept the agenda as published, a motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Hip. Any discussion? All in favor by short hands. Ms. Airwood is in favor as well, here unanimously. So item number two, we'll begin our presentation of the CPTST projects. We're asking you to try to hold to fifteen minutes each, plus your question and answer time if you can. And a man who needs no introduction and is already at the podium, the water tanks for water points for fire protection, Mr. Tommy Long.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Water points were actually on the last one percent funding ballot. We had put it on there for ten of them, and one of them... The property owners backed out, so we ended up with nine. Four of those haven't been completed, but they are to be completed within this current 1% funding. So tonight I'm presenting the possibility of adding four more water points. So that's what I'm gonna be presenting to y'all tonight. This is a picture of one that's finished. I got a bigger shot of it. I'm gonna kinda show you what they look like in the process of being built. It's a forty thousand gallon tank that holds water underground, and of course is encapsulated with gravel and then filled over with dirt. This is kind of midway before they put the final touches on it, where you got your pipes showing out of the tank with concrete around the top of it. This is actual finished site over on Mount Pleasant Road. It's in a field next to a driveway. Looks really good. Of course, the grass hadn't grown back yet around it when they took this picture. Okay, the four sites that we were looking at adding, two of them are on county property. One is at the Belfast substation up on Belfast Road. The second one was gonna be in a Dillinger Road area, near Griffin Road. That site has not been etched in stone yet, but I do have an agreement from the property owner that we will find a spot to put it in that general area. The third one is gonna be more than likely on Suba Road, near Graham Road intersection. I've got a verbal agreement from that property owner as well. And then the fourth one is gonna be at the Stony Hill Fire Substation off Stony Hill Road. Most of y'all are probably familiar with where that fire station is at. The total cost on these estimated to come in at three twenty-five each for a total of one million, three hundred thousand is the estimate that we were provided by Alliance on these four sites. It's gonna take very little groundwork on these because most of the areas they're going in is already cleared off, so we won't be able to, a whole lot of grading and so forth at these four sites, which is a good thing. That pretty much sums up my presentation. I got, I got behind myself here. That's the Dillinger Road. It's not gonna be in that exact spot, but it'd be somewhere near that intersection. And then the Graham is gonna be more on the Suba roadside. And then the Stony Hill will be near the substation there. And I know you probably can't see that real good, but I think y'all got a copy of that in the packet, so that's the estimate there. If y'all have any questions for me.
Any questions for Mr. Long?
I've got one question, Tommy. You said on the last one we had ten, and some of those have been already completed and...
Five of those have been completed so far.
Of those five, how many times have they been put to use in responding to fires?
We haven't had to actually use one for a fire. We do do training on them, make sure they know how to operate them and so forth. And we try to go out and test them each, each one at least once a year and run, you know, flow water through them so they don't just sit there not being utilized, but do training on them. Our goal is not to have to use them, to be honest with you.
Well, I understand. That'd be great. It'd be great not having fires.
We've been fortunate not to have to use them yet.
Okay.
So.
All right.
And I did check with Water Authority to make sure they weren't planning on putting water in any of these areas where I've notated where I'm gonna put these. So in the next ten years, they don't have anything planned to go as far as running water lines in those areas. I'm gonna throw that out on there as well.
Other questions for Ms. Long?
How much actual acreage does it take up, Tom?
It don't, it don't take up much at all. I would say probably a hundred foot by, what, four hundred foot?
Kyle, do you notice that dimension?
Just curious.
By a hundred, by a hundred, by three hundred foot?
By a hundred is the property and the pad is seven, four by four.
It don't take up very much at all. And it looks real nice once the grass grows back around them. There's, I don't know if y'all been on Highway one seventy-six. We got one on one seventy-six. It, it's very attractive. I mean, it's not our soil by any means.
I grew up by that one a good bit. It does, it looks fine. Anybody else? All right. Thank you so much, Tommy.
Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you, Tom.
Next item on our agenda would be the Newberry County Parks, Parks and Recreation Complex.
Hello. So while he's pulling that up, the full proposal was for an actual complex, which would have four full-size soccer fields. And the reason that we are kind of saying soccer fields is because that's what we offer presently, aside from baseball and softball, and where we've seen the largest increase in the number of participants. And we, we added junior soccer in addition to the, the regular youth soccer that we already do. And we've had a ton of interest in adult league soccer as well, and we really don't have any place to play it because they need a full-size field. But what we're asking for, what I'm asking for, I guess, is pretty much just me, is the four full-size soccer fields, obviously a concession restroom building to service those. Ideally, we'd love to have a dog park and a playground and places to entertain those that they also bring with them. There would need to be parking, obviously. And then some of the other pieces that were on this proposal that would probably be more considered maybe a phase two are an indoor facility. Right now, it's, you know, the gym at the Y, Old Gallman, Redeemer, the city runs point on basketball, and those gyms stay busy. They really use the Y specifically for basketball. We're not looking to add a gym specifically for basketball, but it would complement what they're doing there and help them out with having space for practices and games. We're hoping to be able to use it for other things, like winter sports, aside from basketball, like maybe some indoor soccer or other things. So we're not trying to take anything away from anyone. We're just trying to all work together. I think I'm supposed to click home. All right, so that was the what. I apologize. I was waiting for them to get it up. The bottom part with the other possible features, that's like utopia down the road, future way off probably. But those are the pieces that are gonna bring in revenue, are most likely to bring in revenue from outside of the county. So that's why I was proposing those types of items. So again, with the Y, our numbers, and y'all just recently saw these charts anyway, but our numbers are up in soccer. And so last year we saw a huge increase in those numbers. They're up about fifteen percent. We also added junior soccer for twelve- to seventeen-year-olds, and we had eighty participants in our first year. We're, we've had a ton of people already asking us about junior soccer this year. And again, we've had a lot of adults asking about an adult soccer league, which is what you can't see down there. The other reason being, obviously, you know, we're seeing an increase in the population. That's projected to continue to increase. And then the other piece that I found interesting is we have a lot of people that are commuting in to work here, but they don't live here. So ideally, if we maybe can add some things that would draw their interest in moving to Newberry, that would be great. So the where, so we've looked at several different sites. The first choice here has been sold. But other choice is Cockrell Road, which is actually the old landfill. So it's fifty-nine acres out there, and that's what Alliance kind of worked up their conceptual layout that you saw. This, this one looks a little bit different because this is ideally, I would like four full-size soccer fields. You know, that's how we're gonna be able to program for all of our soccer participants. Right now, we use the outfield of all the baseball fields in prosperity. Almost, well, literally, the outfield of every single baseball field other than Langford Street. So. Sorry, this thing's frozen. So I kinda broke it down into the possible phases. The one concern out there is there is a gun club out there. We are estimating the cost to be between three point two five million up to four point four million for the four soccer fields, the concession, the sidewalks, the parking, and a playground and a dog park. Phase two, which Alliance did not estimate, but we're estimating the cost to be between five point two five to six point five million for the indoor facility, another paved parking lot, and walking and jogging trails throughout the site. Any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Long?
Yeah, I'm just curious to know how, what are you planning to do about those concerns?
So the gun club is a lease, so hopefully that's something that we can get out of. Because obviously, we don't need shooting where there's kids playing. So I'll be honest, you know, that's something we definitely have to look into. I have not at this point, but it is, it is a lease, so.
Other questions? Ms. Long, thank you so much. Wonderful presentation. Next, we have the renovation of the Old Gallman High School.
Okay, this is as close as we're going to get. Good evening to you.
Good evening.
Council members, Mr. Inglais, thank you for this opportunity. You've given us to make our presentation for our proposal for CPTST money. I'm Joe McDonald, and I'm representing the Building Thriving Communities Foundation, which is supposed to be on this slide, so imagine it up there. Someone has erased it. Some spirit in the building. It's a 501(c)(3) organization. The board is pictured here, and these are people I imagine you recognize. These are people who have run programs and organizations in our county for many years. These are people who have handled budgets. They've managed construction. They've raised money. They've built partnerships. They served in public office. These are people who have done a lot of good for Newberry for a lot of years and are excited about this latest venture, and I'm proud to be among them. Our project is called Gallman Place, and it's a multi-use community center with programs and services that address needs, important needs across our county. It will be housed in the old Gallman High School, which was opened from nineteen fifty-four through nineteen seventy. After it was a high school, it was a middle school. It was a grammar school. It was an alternative school, and then it was adult education. It served many for many years. Two of our board members, Ms. Pat Caldwell and Mr. John Glasgow, are Gallman High graduates. Two other board members, Travis Reader and Carlton Keiner, attended Gallman after it was a high school. It was deeded to our foundation by the school district just this last December. It was named, of course, for Dr. Ulysses S. Gallman, a long-time and noted educator in the county. It is indeed an historic building, and part of our excitement in creating Gallman Place is that it will be a tribute to those who have attended Gallman and graduated from Gallman. And this continued use will make sure that this former high school continues to provide services to benefit many in the years to come. At this point, I'm going to introduce Ms. Maddie Dillon, who is a Gallman graduate, who has a few reflections about Gallman High.
Mr. Chairman, county council members, good evening.
Good evening.
I am Maddie Dillon, a lifelong resident of Newberry. Along with that, I am a graduate, a very proud graduate of Newberry, of Gallman High School here in Newberry. I'd like to take, I've been given two minutes, and I'd like to just take time to talk to you a little bit about three points of emphasis as it relates to Gallman High School. First of all, Gallman High is so important to all of us who attend it. And I do want to insert that we do have a county councilman who also graduated from Gallman, and that's Johnny Scurry. So I just wanna point that out. The thing about attending Gallman is that, once we left, that was like a launching pad for us, meaning it sent us out into the world of adulthood. Some of us went on to colleges. Some of us went immediately into the workforce. The contributions made by Gallman High students have impacted this county, the state, and the nation. And actually, as I talk to people, I find out that there are some people who have also worked internationally. So bottom line, we are spread out across the world. Second point I want to point out is there's such a rich history when it comes to Gallman High School. Having knowledge of this wealth of history, the Gallman Place project will be an excellent tribute to the students who attended Gallman, and it will also be a tribute to this Gallman High in itself. The other point is Gallman High School building can continue to be a vital entity in the community and continue to be a contributing factor if the Gallman Place project receives the needed funds. So many services will be realized, and for me, there are two in particular that I'm hoping, and I've heard some things about. I'm just looking forward to these being a part of the community, helping the county, just helping the city as a whole. One of those is early childhood and youth services, our future leaders. We can expect one day to have some of these young people sitting in your seats, some of them standing where I'm standing tonight. The second thing would be various services for the senior citizens. They took care of us and the current leaders when we could not take care of ourselves. We need to take care of them now. So those are the two things that I'm really passionate about, and as I've kind of gathered information about the Gallman Place project, these are the kinds of things that would be addressed. So with that, I think my two minutes are up, and I would just like to say thank you for your time and your attention. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Maddie is one of the many passionate people I've met who were affected by the Gallman School and hold a special place in their hearts for it. And again, that's part of the excitement of what we're doing, is to continue the useful service of that building. The mission of Gallman Place, it will be a resource and education center. It will provide activities that help individuals and families be more informed, be healthier, be more productive, and be more engaged in their community. Here are some of the interior spaces as they exist right now in the Gallman School. You can see from the top left, that's one of the classrooms, adult ed, left us desks and chairs in many of the classrooms. The center top is the cafeteria. Cafeteria is still in good shape. The top right, of course, is the gym, and the city is using the gym right now for basketball leagues. Bottom left is the large library with bookcases left there again by adult ed. The center bottom is one of the administrative offices adult ed had, and they left desks and bookcases. And then the right is the kitchen, and you can see that there is a fire suppression hood, and that still works. This is a floor plan. I imagine most of you are familiar with this building. It is U-shaped. I will explain the significance of these colors in a, in a later slide. But the big green rectangle is the cafeteria and the kitchen, and the right wing at the top in yellow is the gym. The rest of the space is approximately sixteen classrooms. There are four bathrooms, and there are several other offices. What about the need for something like Gallman Place? We know that Newberry County prospers in many ways, but we also know we have significant challenges. We know we have poverty. We know we have children's poverty. We know we have educational challenges. And we see Gallman Place as a site where these can be addressed in a comprehensive way. Here's our plan. First of all, space for existing social programs, and I will turn to some slides about that in just a minute. Second, an academic center with tutoring, with courses, with book clubs, with summer camps. Third, a community gathering place, a place for a variety of groups to meet, talking about a variety of topics. And fourth, a history and archives room to document and display the rich history of Gallman. Now, to those social programs that would like to start operations at Gallman. The Newberry County Literacy Council, under the direction of Ms. Barbara Chapman, these are some of the programs she offers at the downtown office. And she thinks that many of these can also be offered at Gallman. And you're probably familiar with some of these programs, many of which she's been running for years. The Living Hope Foundation, under the direction of Mr. John Glasgow, who is on our board. The Living Hall Foundation, under the direction of Mr. John Glasgow, who is on our board. We know that Mr. Glasgow has been a hero in the area of food distribution and food need in Newberry for years, and has especially stepped up during COVID. And John is all smiles, as you can imagine, about the possibilities of the use of Gallman Newberry College, Dr. Kristi Hughes is on our board, and Mr. Carlton Kinerd is on our board, and they can provide tutors for activities. They will take the lead in grant writing. The nursing program, the education department, and the physical therapy program have expressed an interest in outreach activities and experiential learning. Faculty in the music and creative arts program and the recreation and wellness programs would like students to set up and run programs at Gallman as part of their education and as part of the commitment of the college to service. First steps, under Ms. Sarah Ergle, Ms. Ergle is on our board. They will provide books and readers, a story walk. The slide on the right is a story walk they created in downtown Newberry, a children's Bright Beginnings in Family Literacy, under Emily Crump Sadler. These programs used to be in Gallman, and they moved out at the same time that adult ed did, and she is interested in a variety of programming that would promote family literacy using facilities at Gallman. The adult ed program, under Ms. Roberta Kinerd, they're interested in training sessions. They especially like the kitchen access and other events. The Newberry Family Y, under Scott Sander. Scott has been part of our discussions for several years and is very excited about offering especially health-related programs at Gallman, ones he offers at the Y but can also offer in this kind of satellite program at Gallman. And many of these would benefit seniors. The Newberry Arts Center, under Ms. Marguerite Palmer. I talked to Marguerite again yesterday. I've talked to her about this project over the years, really, on numerous occasions. And I talked to her again just the other day, and she hopes to have a variety of programs related to children's and adults' classes at Gallman, and we're hoping we could use her resources also for murals and to dress up Gallman Place. What have we done so far as we prepare for renovations? And remember again that we were deeded the school in this past December. Since then, we have met with a representative from the council of governments to discuss the use of the building and grants. The council has worked with projects like ours and with organizations like ours, and already have given us some great ideas about the use of the site and grant possibilities. We have met with two local contractors just to get the general condition of the building. We have hosted a cleanup with Newberry College students and community volunteers. We have walked through with Alliance Engineering, and we have initiated a donor campaign focusing on Gallman alumni. This is cleanup day back in January. Over 50 Newberry College students and community volunteers loaded over two large dumpsters of debris from the interior of the school. Fundraising to date, and again, our fundraising has been recent because we did not have a school to raise funds for until December, but we've established a PayPal donation site that is in use. We are receiving $600 a month from a private donor. We have received $7,500 from a local foundation with promise of more, and we have negotiated a $100,000 pledge from a local philanthropist. Plus, Kraft Heinz is donating a full kitchen for Gallman Place, including installation. This is not the actual equipment, this is stock footage, but this is something similar to what we expect. Thank you to Kraft Heinz. Arctic Chill is donating 16 office cubicles with desks and cabinets. When John Glasgow and I went out to look at them, they looked very much like this, though this, again, is a stock photo. But these will allow us to create individual workstations and spaces within some of the classrooms at Gallman Place. What do we expect to be the impact of Gallman Place? Once we are open, once we have programs running, we expect to have a significant impact on poverty, on employment readiness, on education, on attitudes about the community, and on engagement of people in the community. Plus, we will become a community hub for activities of all kinds, serving people across Sustainability, how will we keep this thing going? We certainly will rely on grants, again, using the grant writing resources of Newberry College. We will start a community donation campaign. We will offer room sponsorships focusing on Gallman graduating classes. We expect to receive rental income from office space, classrooms, and the kitchen and dining hall. And we will start a corporate campaign that would help us to fund things like a computer lab, an archive and history room, and a stage renovation. What are we asking for? I can explain these colors now. The colors represent phases of renovation, and the first phase is in green, and that's the phase we're asking for funds for. It would include four or possibly five classrooms. It would include the kitchen and the cafeteria. It would include the four restrooms, and it would include some needed roof repair. The estimated cost of that first phase for which we're asking for money is $1,450,000. I'll leave that up there a second. You can see the other phases in two shades of yellow, and in the blue, and in the red. A final observation, we agree with those who have said that partnerships are very important, and that especially a partnership that includes county and city and another entity is very important. So we think that these three entities, working together on a shared purpose, sharing responsibilities, makes together a more productive and more effective outcome. This is our presentation, and we'll be happy to entertain questions. We have Ms. Pat Caldwell here, Mr. Carlton Kinerd here, we have Ms. Barbara Chapman, who is our interim director from Gallman Place, so I would like them to help in answering any questions that you might have for us.
We'll open the floor for questions by council members.
I usually have one, Joe.
I know you less.
You've got Phase 1 at $1.4 million, and there are multiple phases. Will you be able to effectively use this old Gallman School after Phase 1 is complete, or will you have to wait till additional phases are complete to use it?
Somebody else want to address that? Can we get more voices here? Carlton?
Mr. Vice Chairman, yes, we will be able to use the facility with everything in place with the Phase 1. Of course, we will continue to raise funds and make that responsibility for us as a foundation and as a board to continue to raise those funds for the other phases, but yes, we will be able to use the building in its complete order with the finish of Phase
And I just have a comment too. It's an excellent presentation. Obviously, a lot of community folks involved in this, and a lot of work has gone into this already. So thank you, Joe, and to everyone here who's had a part in that.
And there have been a lot of people, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions?
Yeah, hold on. Let's give everybody else a shot. Okay, now you can, we do appreciate, I would echo the vice chair's comments. I appreciate particularly the self-advocacy, is that you hadn't sat back and just said, hey, somebody throw us some money. You went out there and worked hard to self-advocate, and if you don't fight for yourself, no one else will. And so that's so refreshing and appreciated in today's world. Ms. Dillon, thank you for your presentation and for your years back in Newberry County at the school district and all that you did there, so we're blessed by that, and we just appreciate this presentation. Excellent job, and I hope it's an opportunity to preserve a piece of our culture and have the African-American community know that, stand with them and support them in every way we can.
Thank you very much.
Anybody else? Okay. All right, next on the agenda is the roof replacement and HVAC improvements at the Are you doing that?
No.
No?
Am I doing it? Oh, I didn't know.
Something tells me we're going from a great presentation to...
Yeah. I'm understanding. I'm understanding. I thought the museum people were taking care of this one. Y'all didn't tell me about this one. All right, so let me get prepared here then. Yep. So anyway, hey, Mary.
Hey.
I don't even have, I don't even have that in my brochure.
We're gonna see how Irvin tap dances.
He can swerve with the best.
I'm gonna, it might be some provocations or ad libbing or whatever you got here, but we'll, we'll get this, we'll get this figured out.
Not like ad libbing when you're doing construction.
I guess I'm on the floor for the rest of the night then. I should have, all right, community? No, we're doing the, we're doing the museum. I'm doing the museum.
Is that fair enough? Then I can chime in to...
Say what?
I can chime in to...
Did you get the budget number, Duncan? You got that? All right, I'm gonna start, I'm gonna start. Okay, y'all bear with me. All right, so everybody knows about the museum and everything, and the fact that it became a museum a few years ago, and everybody is aware that it was the old library up till, what, 14, 15 years ago? And then we moved the old library out into the new library, and then we had a very old kind of dilapidated building on our hands, so we went ahead and started gutting that out, to be blunt with you. We started taking out all the asbestos and all the other bad stuff was in there, and that took a good year or two years, and we did, we did restoration work on the outside on a lot of the windows and, and the doors and the woodwork, and, and then... Do we have any members of the ARB in here? Good. Then we cut down all the shrubbery in front of the building. I don't know how many of y'all were aware, you know, what we did there. And we had in our plans, if you, if some of you guys that were around then, a new landscaping plan that went along with whatever else we might do to the building. It took for years to get that landscaping plan in place, and that's when we did the museum and everything. In that interim, once we moved the library out, they were already leaking in several places. So once we got the real bad stuff out and we took care of some of the exterior stuff, we said we gotta take care of the roof. We started doing roof repairs. That roof is a clay tile roof, except for the very middle part, that I don't have a picture of, but it's a, it was an old built-up tar and gravel roof, which we changed over into an insulated TPO membrane roof to help with the drainage, and it was leaking all the way from there all the way down to the basement and everything. When we did the clay tile repairs, we had to go all the way back to a foundry that made them in Indiana, and they didn't make them anymore because that roof is 100 years old. 1922, I think, is when it was finished, so, and they had the tile before then and everything. So we were able to get a special made batch and replace the tiles all around the chimney area for the most part, and got that leak sealed up. Of course, we did the middle part and got that leak sealed up. So we sealed up the leaks, got the museum going, moved the people in, got the museum up and running, and it wasn't probably any time at all we had another leak. Clay tiles were cracking, okay, and we do have some pictures of that, where those 100-year-old clay tiles are cracking, 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 okay? And we, we also had some drain line problems. We took care of the drain line problems. We have done some sealing on the cracked tile, okay, but they keep cracking just about every day. So the state that we're in now, we just did a big patch repair job, what, two years ago, and Debbie and Karen can maybe refresh my memory on how much money we spent on that, but we did a, we basically did a membrane over the clay tile. In fact, if you can, if you look at the pictures, you can see that you can still see the cracks in the clay tile and everything. All we did was basically fill them in a little bit and everything. So that's where we are now, and, and we haven't had a real bad leak lately. We haven't had a whole lot of real heavy, heavy rains either. When we start getting those heavy, heavy rains, it starts finding the cracks in the clay tile easily. So to remedy that whole situation, the best way to do it is go ahead and replace that whole entire clay tile roof with new. Now, one thing about doing it with new is you won't have to worry about matching the existing clay tile. You can start with your own profile clay tile and get those made and just start from scratch. At the same time, you're, you pull it off, you're gonna have to do some decking repairs, which we know, we can see that from inside, we could before we put insulation in on the project. And then the other thing is, we know there's no ice and water shield. It's old, old tar paper, what's left of it underneath, and, and once that water comes through a crack in the clay tile, it's, it's finding the cracks in the tar paper and coming right on through. So to resolve the problem, that's what you'd be doing. You'd be pulling off that clay tile, you'd be redecking it as needed, maybe some amount of wood repair. You would put down a brand-new ice and water shield, which is something they didn't have 100 years ago. It was all tar paper at the best, and then you'd come back with your new clay tile to get you a good seal, which will probably last you pretty close to another 100 years, because clay tiles are good roofing material. What's good about it, it's, it's, you know, it doesn't wear down as fast as, like architectural, like shingles we're gonna talk about in a minute, and it's, it's even really more durable than a, than a metal roof, because a metal roof will oxidize on you, and even once it starts oxidizing, will start maybe creating some rust and that sort of stuff. Plus, you got a lot more movement in a metal roof than you got in a clay tile roof. So that's what that, this project would be about.
What are the HVAC improvements?
Sir?
It also says HVAC improvements. What are those?
Uh, that is a problem with the, with the units that were put in when they did the museum, not necessarily doing what they should be doing, okay? They're not cooling to the standards that the museum people would like, and same way, they're not providing enough heat when they need it. They're not keeping that balance of humidity and heat in the building. Now, the building, like I said, it's all old stone and brick, no insulation in the walls, no insulation on the basement walls or anything like that. There was some insulation added up in the roof when we did the museum project. There's modifications that the designer, the mechanical engineer, and the architect says that we can do that would help improve the situation on the airflow and everything like that, so that's what that's about.
Other questions from council?
What's to talk, Carl?
That was gonna be mine.
I think Kyle, we could, yeah. Yeah.
Good evening. I'm Kyle Clamp with the Lions Consulting Engineers. Uh, Palmetto State Roofing is the ones provided some quotes far back, as fourteen, fifteen years ago, as Irvin was telling on the history of that. It's about half what it was then, now it's double. Um, so they did provide a price two years ago for four hundred and fifty thousand for a total replacement. They do feel that number is around seven hundred to seven fifty today.
And what about the heat and air?
Um, that number is not available just yet that I'm aware of.
That number is gonna be, uh, we've thrown some numbers around. We haven't actually got... I think we do have hard quotes on that, Todd, but I have to go back and check. But that, that number's in the forty thousand, fifty thousand range.
And the number of the seven hundred, seven fifty in, on that flat roof portion, instead of going with the TPO to try to, if you wanna do more historically, they do a lock and seam, which is actually a welded joint versus the TPO roof. So that's gonna get you more of what Palmetto State would call a hundred-year roof, uh, as Irvin was mentioning. So they would recommend that on that flat roof portion.
From an appearance perspective, will it maintain the same appearance? Because if not, ARB is gonna be an issue.
Unless you're in a drone, you're not gonna see the, uh, the flat roof portion, so.
What about the, uh, the tile roof portion?
The tile roof, you could, you would still see.
And so it's gonna resemble closely to what we have?
Yes, it'll resemble, it'll, you know, you, it'll be a brand-new clay tile roof. It'll definitely, it'll look just like the building did in nineteen twenty-three, twenty-four, when they built the thing. And it looked like that until it started, you know, staining and cracking, what, nineties or something like that, when it really started getting some age on it and everything like that. I had some pictures, but we didn't get those put on the slide, where I did a patch, a patch on the backside because of that last bad leak we were having up on the mezzanine and everything. We didn't match the color a hundred percent. In other words, our colors are a little bit darker than what the tile is. But, you know, matching something that's a hundred years old is... We did, we did a sample, a little sample. It looked close, but when we did the area, and we did an area that was about thirty foot by about twenty foot, if I remember correctly. With that, with that, it's a silicone product is what we put on. And it'll hold. The silicone product is good. Uh, we got like a five-year warranty on it. You can come back every five years and re-coat the thing if you want to. Uh, and I forget what we paid, uh... I'm thinking that we spent, I'm just gonna throw a number out there, ten thousand dollars, just to do that one patch. Might've been more. We can look that up for you, though.
How long has the, uh, museum been in operation?
As a museum?
Uh-huh.
Mu- museum's been there for.
It opened up, uh, December twenty-nineteen.
December twenty-nineteen, two years, two going on, a little over two, two and a half years.
What are the financials of that particular facility at this point? Reason I'm asking, we were told when we made that transaction, uh, transition to the, uh, library, that for every one dollar we put into it, we would return seven dollars back in return.
There's no way to really measure that. We don't sell any products. And I don't know, we track, uh, money coming into county, spend for hotels and restaurants and that sort of thing.
Okay. So that was kind of a fictitious number that was given to us then? Other questions or comments?
Yep, if I may ask a question on this new roof, what type of warranty would be with it?
Mary, I don't, I, I haven't gotten into that detail yet. You know, I'm, I'm saying it's, and I, I don't wanna be outlandish here, but I'm saying it's a warranty that's gonna definitely outlive me. But it'll probably be at a minimum a thirty-year warranty. Because just like now, you can do a shingle, uh, thirty-year shingle roof, and you'll get a warranty for twenty years on your shingles. So you're looking at, you know, at least, I'm gonna say, a thirty. That goes back to whoever your manufacturer of your tile's gonna be and, and what they're making it. And it also goes to what your configuration of your existing roof is. So you could get a lot, and you know, that's, that's one of the things, how long is somebody gonna write a warranty for? I don't know. Is the company that's gonna provide the warranty, they're gonna be in business fifty years from now? That's a, that's another question. So, yeah, that's, that's one we haven't, uh, got into investigating yet.
Anyone else on this project? Okay. Hearing none, we'll move to the, uh, roof replacement, basement improvements at community hall.
Okay. All righty, we're getting there. All right, I'll go ahead. This, this is the community hall roof, and it's both courthouse network improvements. We'll talk about the community hall first. Uh, the community hall roof repair, uh, here's our existing issues. We know that we've got worn shingles that are at least twenty-eight years o- old. I had tried to track this down to when were these things actually put on there? And some people in here might know a lot more than I do. But I know that the, uh, court, the old courthouse, as I call it, has gone through several fire events. And in fact, if you go up into that attic, you can see one big, huge timber. When I say huge timber, it's that big, that big, and it's thirty-foot long, and it's still up there. But it's charred. It's charred an inch thick from one of the fires. And it was just too big and heavy for them to, to carry, carry down. So I know from, from what I could gather, it's at least twenty-eight years old, okay? Uh, I also know that, uh, uh, these are not anything special. They seem to be when it was done, when whoever did the roofing back then, it was done. It's nothing more than a regular, normal, commercial, uh, not even commercial, maybe even residential type shingle. You know, it doesn't look like anything fancy to me. It looks like they're, you know, they're definitely not architectural. They're not high-density. They're not thick. The last one, I've seen two shingles on the ground over the last couple of years. One shingle, the, the other shingle I saw on the ground was, uh, the day we did the Martin Luther King, uh, uh, presentation. I was walking down the sidewalk, and we just had that storm. Travis remembers that. It was cold that morning. And we'd had all that wind, the, the wind had blown all night long. In fact, it was even one of you guys was gonna hold the thing. And as I'm walking back down to the park and everything, there's a shingle on the, uh, on the sidewalk. And I pick it up, and I said, oh, my gosh. And, uh, that is, if you look around, that is the only shingle roof around. You go look at all the other areas and everything, most of these other old buildings are either still built-up tar and gravel roofs or the ones that have been replaced are now like TPO or membrane roofs. That's all the old buildings, how they're replacing them now. This one being a gable roof, low slope and all like that, the, and no parapet walls. The best thing to do with this is just to go back like it is with, uh, with, uh, regu- with shingles. So you've got, you've got, uh, shingles that are pretty well worn out now. Uh, if you go in there, and I was up there when we did a patch just a while ago, uh, after this last storm, we, uh, went up there, patched. And you can see, if you look at the pictures, the dark areas up on the top, and I think I've got another picture here. There's another picture of the ridge, kinda right in the middle, that ridge cap and blew off. And that's the first time anything like that had happened. And that's just the way the, the drone is taking the pictures, one side, still the same color as the other, it's just the way the sun was shining on it. So, uh, uh, also looking right here, uh, between the cupola and the edge of the building, you got a deflection in the roof structure. You actually got two. So that deflection in the roof structure is where the roof is sagging underneath the decking, based on some of these old timbers and, 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 uh, other things that are holding it up. You can go in that attic area, and you can see where they've already, over the years, tried to brace some of it up. So it's got a deflection there. And then I think we got cornice and soffit repair needed in areas throughout the whole building, around the whole building. All right, the proposed improvements are, you're gonna remove all the shingles. You're gonna repair the, uh, damaged roof decking and the trusses. You will install a, uh, an ice and water shield, something they didn't have whenever they did this or didn't use or didn't really. It was kinda even new technology twenty-five, thirty years ago, ice and water shield. And then, uh, the proposal now is to install some thirty-year architectural shingles. Now, uh, you don't have to go with architectural shingles, because you, you can only see the roof if you're standing way over here with a pair of binoculars or you got a drone, you're flying around. But I just said, if you're gonna do it, do the thirty-year, do the architectural shingles, which gives you more density and more thickness, and will hold up longer. And then, of course, you'll repair the cornice and the soffit.
Other questions about this project?
There, there's the budget. Your shingle work itself is only about fifty-two thousand, and that includes new ice and water shield. Your deck repairs, which until you get that shingle off, is an estimated amount of ten thousand. We know we're sagging in at least one area. The other trim repairs, which is gonna be the cornice and soffit, and while we're there, we might as well work on some of the high windows. They need, you know, they've, they're taking on, they, they've been weathered. So you'll take care, you'll spend about ten thousand dollars and redo all of those. And also included in here is some of the basement work. Basement is, uh, just like all the other basements in, in the city, they're, they're damp, they're wet. And what we have in the basement is we have our machine room for the elevator. And that's where we need to rip out some old drywall, take care of treatment down there, and put some new, uh, not drywall, back some higher-density, uh, gypsum board to keep that moisture out.
I apologize, I... Now, are there any questions?
Now.
Hearing none, we'll let you move on into the courthouse, uh, technology upgrade, IT improvements.
Okay, we missed the first picture, but that's okay. What you, what you've got, I wanna show you this picture here. What you see there with the switches and all that wiring, and you look in the background, you've got other switches and other controllers for the whole building. And then if you look back this way, you've got the same thing again. You've got more wiring, more controls. If you notice, there's maybe a few inches to get between all that wiring and get back to that. That, that's actually your security, uh, system for the building on the back, on that wall. The picture we're missing, though, that all of this, and I think I could go to another one. Yeah, there it is again. All of this is in a small closet. If you notice, that's bifold doors on both sides. And all of that is in the judges' chamber. So when we go in there to, if we have an outage, something's down, something's not working, we have to go in there and start troubleshooting and all of that, we're going into the judges' chamber on this floor to get in there. And you can't get in there. You basically work from outside into the secretary's area, and you're creating a big disruption in their whole office operation. So, uh, now, let me go back. So the existing issues here is, like I said, insufficient space. You can't, you've got, what happens is, the fiber optic comes in through the basement. And as I mentioned before, basement, damp, uh, high moisture area. But that's where we're bringing the fiber optic in. This is a thing, this whole thing was put together piece by piece over the years. Kept adding on and adding on as extra services were added and required. And we're still in that phase with the courthouse. Uh, so we have insufficient space. We've got the damp, low-lit area in the basement where your main lines come in. There's lack of climate control everywhere. There's lack of climate, climate control in the basement to start with. And each one of these closets, there's this closet and the closet up in the solicitor's office, there's no airflow. Up in the second floor, you'll see, uh, where we've got some slats in the bifold door. All the switches, if you'll notice with all that wiring, everything is near maximum capacity or at maximum capacity. The last, uh, upgrade we just did was the, uh, uh, state, uh, DSS system. They took up all the other ports on, on two switches. We got one or two ports left on the third switch. And, uh, and like I said, we're, we're maxed out. If somebody comes in and says, we need to do this, or we wanna do that, you just don't have the room. You don't have the space, you know, you just don't have the room. And then, of course, with all of that, it's just a difficult area to access equipment for repair, maintenance. The proposed improvements are gonna be relocate all of this equipment that starts with the basement, judges' chambers, solicitor's closet. You take all of this equipment, or, or let me rephrase that. You take and move all of the network, the building network, to the third floor. And there's two big rooms up there in the third floor that are basically clean and open and dry and climate controlled right now. They're ready for, uh, switches, racks and switches to be put in them. So you would come on in here, we'd do a, we'd do a complete design, because you gotta go back in there now. As you can see, that's a hodgepodge. That's a, that's what we call a rat's nest right there. And, uh, you know, if you went to the new server room we got out in Newberry Square, you see we got everything pretty well organized. That's, that's pretty, pretty bad there. You can't even get behind those switches. So what we would do on that third floor in that room is we would go ahead and set up new equipment, which would be new racks to house all the equipment, new switch gear, new wi- new wiring would be pulled from all the different locations that's in the courthouse now. That's everybody's computer, everybody's, uh, printer that's up in the courtrooms, it's in all the offices, going all the way down to the basement. New fiber optic would be run in to the third floor. You'd bypass the old basement altogether. And then, of course, you gotta have all the termination hardware and equipment with that. You'll have to do a little bit of building renovations, drilling through some floors and some walls and that sort of stuff. And everybody knows courthouse is thick walls, thick floors, but you'd have some of that. Then after you, what you do is you set up this train, I'm calling this a whole train, a network train. You would set it up in the third floor. You would go ahead and test it and get it commissioned. You'd have everybody involved in that, uh, the, uh, the courthouse's security people, okay? The DSS systems in there and all of our network equipment, you'd make sure that everything was operational. Then you would come, when everything was operational, then you would do the big switch over, flip the switch, and now you're on a new, modern, up-to-date system. Then, after that's all up and running, you'd come back through here and you'd take all that out. You'd just gut it out, take it out. You would salvage everything you could for wiring, for the switches to be used elsewhere within the county or, or wherever, uh, the best place came up for it to be. So, um, you'd, you'd have some salvage value in there. And let's see. All right, budget on this one. You got some engineering work that you're definitely gonna have to do. You're gonna buy brand-new racks, which are, you know, where everything sits and goes. You will have new switch gear. You'll have wiring, uh, you'll have all your hardware that you gotta do for termination. You'll have a, an installation labor, which will include, uh, not only our network guys, but it will include DSS and the security team. They will have to do some, uh, labor on top of it. And some building modifications are gonna be, like I said, you'll, you'll wanna run this through the floors and the walls where you can have easier access. Right now, you can't even get to it. Uh, we don't even know where half of that stuff is run. Uh, you've got some vendor costs. That'll be, uh, your security vendor and your DSS. And then you'll have your testing and commissioning, and, uh, then you'll have your own network removal. You don't wanna leave it there. You wanna free up the closets and let them be used for what they were intended to be used for, closets. The judge can hang his robe in the closet now instead of on a coat rack that he does outside, if you ever go up in there. Put a little bit of contingency on top of that, because it's still a, a, you know, difficult project. And you're looking at right around two hundred ninety-five thousand. We'll keep it under three hundred thousand.
Other questions from council on this one?
That, uh, server room is supposed to be secure and climate controlled, though, correct?
Oh, yeah. We've already.
It's definitely not that now.
No, no, we've already replaced the main switch down in the basement. That's where the fiber optic comes in. We replaced that. We had a major shutdown because the corrosion had got to that switch. And we were lucky then, we were able to get a, uh, a loner switch for about a week or, or something like that, or two weeks, before we could actually purchase our own switch.
This definitely needs.
Yeah. It's not the place, it's not the place to have.
No, you need a server room.
Also, yeah, it needs to be in a climate-controlled server room, uh, like we've got out in Newberry Square now. Also, from that switch in the basement, it also feeds the other three buildings downtown here. We feed, uh, treasurer and auditors, Ag Building, and this building is fed from that one switch. We've got the fiber optic line that comes, uh, now it comes, uh, underground from the city across the street. Before then, it came overhead, and every time we'd have a storm, we would have an outage until it could be fixed.
And, and this is a reflection on you, but I think we as council need to acknowledge that, uh, most everything in the computer. that, uh, most everything in the computer world, server, switches, routers, are all set up on a three-year cycle now.
Yeah.
You can't continue maintenance on them outside of that, so there, you, um, usually Cisco and all those are not gonna carry outside of a smart net for more than three years, so... This is not going to be a ten-year solution. This is a three-year solution on most of the, uh, computer technology. Now, the racks and things will last longer than that, but the computers themselves, the routers and switches likely will not.
That's right. And then it's, as the, as the worldwide web, the internet keeps on growing and growing and growing, your old stuff becomes out of date. It's a never, it's like a never-ending cycle now.
It is a never-
Will it be set up for future improvements as well as have additions, additions added to?
Yeah, that's, that's the thing about moving upstairs into the third floor, the big rooms. You can put what you've got now in there where you can get to both sides of them. You know, work on the back, 'cause on a switch, you've got the front part that you see there on the back, you've got a whole new plug-in part back there that you gotta be able to get to. Your patches and everything on the backside. Todd knows how we did the, uh, the racks and everything over at the sheriff's office. He can, he can walk around the whole thing and see the whole thing. That's how we got it set up, the IT suite.
And you're talking about the, the old holding cells in very tip-top up there that go with either side of the-
No, I'm talking, uh, going up the stairs. In other words, if you're going into the courtroom, that's door on the, right there that stays locked, is secured, you go up a set of stairs there.
Used to be the holding cells-
And, and, no, these are rooms that are over the holding cells. And they're clean and they're, they're, they, you know, one of them does house electrical equipment. But it's, it's the bigger room, and you've still got plenty of room in it to put plenty of, of racks. So you would have space for future expansion, for sure. And by doing, what I'm talking about doing is the, the building modifications, you would have spare conduit coming from wherever you need, from between the floors, that if you come in there and somebody wants to change your whole system out like DSS or whatever, or if another entity wants to come in there, you can say, "Okay, there you go, run your wires right there." And it's already, therefore, you won't have to go through that part of it again.
I've got a question. The controlled environment, would that be adding another one of the outside units that we have used? I don't know what they're called, but, um, or would this be hooking on to the system in the courthouse?
I think she's talking-
AC?
Yeah, the heating and air.
I'm kinda missing out. Hit me with that question again, Mary.
Okay, you said it would be a controlled environment, temperature-wise. Are we hooking on to a system that's already in the courthouse? Or would we be adding one of those little personal, um, a lot of people put them outside and pipe it up?
Well, you need a heavier unit or a special unit to-
No, we're okay with that. The, the courthouse is supplied by big chiller. Big chiller and a big boiler. All we need is to be, put it in the rooms that has, that has that ductwork already in there.
Okay, that brings-
These rooms that we're planning, would like to put them in, are already climate-controlled.
All right, then I've got another question. If that's the same system as when I was over there, somewhere out of Columbia Control that system, they would cut it off on the weekends if, and we worked. And we would have to go in there and we could only override it for a few minutes. So our computers and everything got hot.
Uh, that's, we've already changed that. We're on a, we're on a computerized, uh, system now, web-based. We can look on the computer, and we've got monitors throughout the whole building. I know what you were talking about. That's what you were having there, yeah. That, we did that several years ago. We've got a, like I said, we've got a computerized monitoring system for, we can see what, we can see the temperature that is coming out of the chiller, we can see the temperature coming back to the chiller. Same thing with the boiler, with the boiler, we can see what's coming in, what's going out, what a PSI is, you know.
Okay, that's been corrected.
We can make, unless it is a complete equipment malfunction, we can make those changes on the computer remotely.
Okay, that's better than what it was.
If the courtroom or even your basement down there, and if I remember correctly, you were in the basement? No, you weren't.
No, I was on my-
But we could do that, we could go to, into all those areas. Each area's got its own, uh, room number and everything. And, and if it's getting too hot in there, we can open and shut the valves and control the air.
Okay, well, that's been improved then, since we've been there.
Yeah, that's, I, I know, well, you, when I first got here, I remember walking down into the basement, and, uh, we wanted to talk about that, and it was ankle-deep in water at the time, and there wasn't any control over anything. But, yeah, the building's come a long way since then, but it's still got room for improvement.
And a lot of server rooms have thermostats attached to them that would alert the network if they drop below-
Yeah, yeah, right.
Yes, yes.
I'm sorry, didn't mean-
That's fine. With the sense of urgency for this one, what seems to be a sense of urgency, I mean, I, I think it's one of those things, whether it makes it to the CPSD or if the CPSD is approved or not approved, it's one of those essential, almost have-to-do projects. Is this one that we could potentially do some improvement through the American Rescue Funds or not?
Now, buddy, in, in my opinion, this is my opinion, I'm thinking that the community hall roof needs some attention, maybe sooner than later. So that might be something for you guys to consider, is sooner being upcoming fiscal year? Just something to think about.
Anybody else?
It wouldn't require a special fire suppression for that, uh, server unit?
No, we should-
Fire suppression?
We talked about that, but we, we, we have, we don't even have that in the, uh, in the, uh, server room we got at Newbury Square. In fact, I think Mr. Hip mentioned that when we were first doing it a few years back. The cost for doing that versus the cost of, uh, uh, what damage you might have to your hardware, to your servers, you could replace it easy. And we, and nowadays, we can get that equipment easy. We keep, we keep those switches, and, and those servers are easy to get. Beyond that, everything we do now is backed up to the cloud. So we, you, you won't lose any data. We do backups every day on everything, so you won't lose any data. You might lose operation on your, uh, on your servers for a day to two days to get replacements in and get them hooked back up. That's something to consider, is going ahead and doing the, uh, the dry sprinkler system. And like I said, Les was a proponent of that years back, but I'm sorry, Les, we haven't done that yet. Okay, but, you know, it's, it's something we can do. I have no problem with that.
All right, other questions? All right, thank you, everyone, we appreciate that. All right, public comments, there is no one signed up for public comments. I think everybody's had their opportunity to, to speak on these projects. Comments or requests from the county administrator?
Chairman, um, I, at this point, I'm not sure we have anything scheduled for council to deliberate and make a recommendation. So my only question would be if you wanna do this at the March sixteenth meeting, take up time at a regular meeting, or if you prefer, council's preference is to get together a special meeting to dive into making some decisions about what recommendation goes to CPSD committee?
I, I can't speak for the rest, I think my preference would be a, a different meeting rather than a regular council meeting, but I can't speak for the rest of the council.
I concur.
We'll put together an agenda, and we'll try and find a date that, we'll work with the chairman, vice chairman, find a date that works for council.
That just, wouldn't be a sense of urgency to get finished because of the people waiting if we had needed to go in executive session, those kind of things?
Correct, and, um, I think CPSD committee's next meeting's not till April, so we do have some time.
They will need to make their decision at their meeting on the sixteenth.
Right.
Your final decision, unless you meet again, you know, you have a special meeting after that, because we'll need to get everything to the CPSD commission the week it's planned right now. Their first meeting for presentations is April the fourth. So we have to get everything together for them prior to that, so they have all the information to start.
Okay. So maybe we can catch that middle week in March, and between the first and the second meeting. So that gives us that week to shoot for. If that's okay with everybody now, I don't wanna speak out of turn, y'all, call me back.
Yeah, I think, uh, the quicker the, the better, because it may end up being something that we actually have to go back and ask for some additional clarification or information or reduction in prices. We may need to talk with our engineers. So, yeah, the quicker we can get it. And then we need to have a second one after that, then we could.
If you know of anything that you'd like to ask before-
We would have a meeting. If you'll email us, we can either get with Alliance, or we can make sure the presenter gets with you or gets with us to see what their possibilities could be, so that we may cut down on time.
Yeah, we could look at, I, I know we gotta meet the advertising requirement, so the first week, any other night, but our second, the meeting on the second, or the next, early as possible in that next week, sounds like it would be best.
Thank you, that's helpful.
Okay. Is that okay with everybody? Nod, rattle, Jake, something, Arie? Is that good with you?
I have to go look at my calendar, but I think it will, hold on.
Okay, all right. While she's doing that, we can begin our, well, she's back now. So while she's looking at her calendar, we can begin our comments from our council members. And I forget where I'm at, so Mr. Shealy, I'm just gonna let you start us off.
Uh, I appreciate all y'all put together for us, and get us quite a bit to consider. Uh, good job on everything.
Mr. Livingston?
Pretty much likewise, appreciate the information shared, a lot of good projects, uh, a lot of money, and a lot of money we don't have, and a lot of money that's not available.
Uh, Mr. Reader?
Now, I think all the presentations were really, um, had good information. I truly appreciate the, that the, um, the prices were not as high as it was last time. So that gives the, uh, a little more space to try to get as many projects in as we possibly can.
Mr. Travis Currie?
We thank you for coming. We just don't ask for time to work with these projects and make the best decision and go forward for Newbury County. Thank you.
Ms. Airwood?
Let me apologize first for not being there in person, but I, I think the ones on each side of me wouldn't want what I have. So I was trying to be, look out for y'all and not give you my cold. Looking at my calendar, after the second, I only have a few days there, that Thursday and Friday, and maybe the Monday, the seventh. And then I'm gonna be out of town for a little while, so, oh.
We'll work together and try to pull a meeting together.
We'll work together and see what we can come up with.
Yes, ma'am. Any comments?
Jen, I appreciate everyone. This wasn't quite as sticker shopper today as it was last week.
Yes, ma'am. Mr. Hip?
Yes, uh, everybody said it well, all the presentations were good presentations. Everything that's been asked for this week and the last time are, there's nothing that we don't need or couldn't use, and nothing that's bad out of anything that's been offered. So, uh, we just have some difficult decisions ahead of us. And then, after that, then the CPSD will also be getting, the commission will be getting more projects from not just the ones we've looked at, so it'll, their job will be difficult, so.
Absolutely. I, I believe if my math is right, we could almost double the amount of money we're gonna receive just in our projects, and that doesn't include any of the municipalities or other organizations. So gonna be some very difficult choices to be made. But, uh, the Lord will give us wisdom and guidance in, in doing those things. So we appreciate everyone and appreciate the staff and our notebooks. This has been a great way to keep up with things, and we're appreciative of that. Having said that, is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Mr. Shealy, second by Mr. Reader, is there a discussion? All in favor, by show of hands, Ms. Airwood included, it carries unanimously, and we stand adjourned.